It's 5:30, I will call the meeting to a quarter. Let's see, up first is the Fire Department Retirement Program.
Yeah, before I get started, I just want to introduce some guests. We have Gemma Miltich and Sharon Norwood of Para, the State's Public Employee Retirement Association. They've got that acronym. So just for Sharon and Gemma's benefit, if we could just go around the room and introduce ourselves and our role. I'll start with American City Manager.
Dave Anderson, City Attorney.
Dicky Sundiden, City Clerk.
Kelly Trumbow, Fire Chief.
Brian Hall, Fire Relief Treasurer.
Brenda Good, Deputy Clerk.
Lynn Shute, Finance Director.
Courtney Johnson, Mayor.
Joanna Knight, Councilmember.
Lynn Henry, Councilmember.
Kristi Maugh, Councilmember.
Laurie Sayer, Councilmember.
So I'm gonna get started tonight, just to give the council and the group an overview of what our benefit plan is, our pension plan for the Fire Department. And then, really, the kind of the road of why we're here tonight or discussing this topic is the Fire Department is interested in a plan that's sponsored by Para related to fire departments. And so Gemma and Sharon were nice enough to come out and kind of add to that conversation. So I'll give kind of an overview of what we have, and kind of where we sit in the market. And then they'll get into some of the details, and then we'll have an opportunity for questions and answers. So just kind of a discussion outline, so we'll give a review of what fire relief associations are, our existing program. We did a market study with our peer cities of how our pension benefit lays out. Then get into the overview of the Para program, and then a benefits analysis recommendation. You'll also see a supplemental attachment, which Gemma will be going over in some detail along with an analysis they did for some contribution levels. So just some basics, because fire relief associations are a little bit different than what our typical, like a regular full-time employee retirement program would be. So it's really a nonprofit corporation, separate from a city. So Santa Fe, Secarver, they have the authority to provide pension, disability, and other benefits to members. They have an approved set of bylaws. They're governed by a board of directors. In addition, the mayor, city manager, and fire chief sit in on those meetings, and are members of that board. The relief association is subject to the open meeting law, so all those meetings are posted. They're held at the fire station, held quarterly, I think. On occasion, there are special meetings. So it's kind of one of the unique kind of pieces of how city governments run and their relationships with relief associations. And I think it tells a little bit of a history of how, you know, oftentimes, especially in smaller cities, fire departments kind of started off on their own. Sometimes they're older than the actual city itself. And so there's this unique relationship where the retirement is a different thing because, in some cases, the Fire Department and the city were kind of separate entities for many years. Their finances, so they operate a pension fund via a special fund, which is their mechanism to distribute their benefits. They're also committed to operate a general fund that stipulated in their bylaws. And so this is something that you'll often see with a golf fundraiser that was just held for, when I first started, there used to be a steak fry in the old building. But it's a way for the department to do some recognition events throughout the year. And then, you know, especially with Brian's role as treasurer, and then Luke Swartz's role as president, there's a number of forms and reports that they need to create. There's an independent audit that needs to be done on their books on an annual basis. It helps us out, and that the relief association uses HABDO, which is also the city's independent auditor.
Right, just to clarify, so the pension fund and the general fund are completely separate when it comes to the relief association?
So general fund, yes, not our general fund.
Right, yep, theirs, yep.
Yes.
So those are, they just stay completely separated from each other within the relief?
Correct.
There's separate checking accounts.
Yep, separate everything's investment, well, we don't invest our general fund, we only invest our special fund.
Okay.
So kind of getting into that, so that pension fund or special fund is operated by a third-party investment firm. So think of, you know, the names that you see there. A big portion of where revenue comes in order to fund pension is from fire state aid. It's based on a methodology that they use based on population and market value in our service area. And so there you can see a kind of a historical trend of fire relief state aid, the fire state aid that we've gotten over the last three years. And then every so often, we'll do an annual, or every year, we'll do an annual assessment to determine our contribution levels. For many years, we've been doing $100 per year. And we haven't really looked at our peer group. And I think, you know, even though we've been able to fund it without contributions from the city, I think we've fallen quite a bit behind as far as our market goes as it relates to fire fund contributions. There have been situations, not specifically in Carver that I'm aware of, or at least in my tenure, but there are times where the pension is underfunded, and then a city has to make a contribution to that pension fund to make sure that it's funded enough to make disbursements to retired members. Here's the vesting schedule. So you're 100% vested after 20 or more years of service. And there's a, are we at 25% calls? Is that the requirement? So in order to gain a full year of service, you have to make 25% of the calls. That number is then reported from the fire chief to the relief association to count as an eligible year of service.
And 50% of trainings.
And 50% of trainings, thank you.
If you were to take a break on that continuum, let's say you needed to take a year or two off, do you start over? Or do you, if you leave at year 10?
Lose a year of service or whatever.
You can take a leave of absence, you don't have to start over.
It doesn't start over, okay.
Correct. So here's our peer city study. We did exclude the city of Elko and Newmarket. I don't know the history, but as you can see, they're larger as far as their contribution goes. So I didn't include it in the average as a, just kind of looked at it as an outlier. But essentially, you can see we're at 2507. We're budgeting for a $100 increase next year to 2607. But still, just using these cities as an average, we're still quite a bit below where we're at, based on those peer cities. So just a little bit of a toe in the water before I hand it over to Gemma and Sharon. A similar presentation that you're about to receive was given to the relief board. And then Brian and Luke held a listening session with members to kind of get some initial input. In general, the membership was supportive, but realizing that both the council and the relief association has to kind of support this venture. We didn't want to get too ahead of ourselves. And so before we bring it back to the relief association for more discussion and potentially a vote, I wanted to kind of bring the council up to speed. But kind of the basics of this is it switches over. Where the funds are managed, not by an independent third party in connection with members of our Fire Department, but it's managed by Para and the State Board of Investment. And really, all kind of the, the kind of the internal management is managed by city staff along with the council. And so that's why this relationship of making sure the Fire Department and relief, et cetera, are supportive of this is really critical to this. We're not, this isn't a push to kind of get this done, but if the council wasn't support and the relief association wasn't support, there is a window to try to get them approved by the end of November. That way, they'd be eligible for the following year. So again, this is a pretty significant task to take on. And so if we're feeling any type of question unanswered or kind of loose ends not tied up, you know, let's kind of set that time kind of to the side and make sure that the council and the relief is getting everything that they need to make a decision. An analysis, and you can see the details in the packet. And I'm not gonna pretend to run my level of math, I didn't prepare this. But I do think that it's significant, and if you look at the benefit level, so we're proposed to be at 2607 based on the current 2023 budget. We looked at different benefit levels, maintaining 125% funding level. At a $4,000 per year benefit, even with the 100, even with the funding ratio, we need about a $500 contribution to get to that 4,000 benefit, which is at the, just about $200 below that average value. So something to consider as we move forward. We're thinking there's an opportunity to kind of shore up kind of the administration and management of the program as well as giving the Fire Department a bigger benefit. Then just a sample of other cities participating in the program. The program isn't very old. How many years are we going on, Gemma?
It started in 2010.
2010, so if you think about kind of fire service as a whole, that's a pretty small window. There's been some changes made, even in that 10 years that I think has made the program a little bit more user-friendly to some fire departments that were maybe a little bit hesitant at first. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Gemma and bring up her presentation. All right.
Okay. Do we have?
Oh, I lost my seat. I don't know if there's my seat.
This is the annual contribution by the city at 495. Is that per fire?
No, total.
That's total?
That's total, okay.
Oh, thank you for asking that question, because my assumption was per person.
I can just cross this a little.
Okay. Huh, okay.
Great.
There you go.
Okay, there we go. So Para administers the statewide volunteer firefighter plan. As mentioned, it started in 2010, so it's our newest pension plan at Para. It's an alternative to having a local relief association. So participation is voluntary, and it's open to fire departments that have a relief association, and then also ones that don't yet have a pension plan. We can maybe just move right to, oh, thank you, sorry. Perfect. We'll run through just some advantages and disadvantages to think about when you're deciding whether or not. The SVF plan, which is what I'll be calling the statewide volunteer firefighter plan, just for short. Just things to think about when you're deciding whether or not to join. So possible advantages. The Fire Department is no longer going to need to do the financial reporting or the financial audit that they typically need to do every year with their relief association. Para is gonna do the pension plan administration, so the relief association doesn't need to do that either. Typically, what we see is that departments come into the SVF plan at the same or higher pension benefit level without increasing the cost to the city. We get to leverage the expertise at the State Board of Investment. Those are the folks that are responsible for investing the pension assets for the SVF plan. And finally, we have pretty minimal administration fees, and the State Board of Investment has relatively small investment fees as well. We'll talk about those specifically a little later on. So the disadvantage, and it depends on your perspective of what, of whether or not this is in fact a disadvantage. But this is, you know, there's a loss of control locally, because Para takes on the pension plan. We're gonna design it, we're gonna administer it. So essentially, the city and the relief association, you're out of the pension business, Para's doing it, right? So how is the SVF plan funded, and who administers it? So the pension plan for the Fire Department is going to be funded by any existing pension assets that they have. Those are gonna get transferred over. Annually, you're gonna get fire state aid, just like you do now. Para will take that aid and deposit it directly into the account for your Fire Department. Any required or voluntary contributions from the city, those are gonna go into the Fire Department's account as well. And then finally, we have investment earnings, right? Those pension assets are gonna be earning an investment return, and those will accrue in the account as well. So the State Board of Investment, once again, those are the, that's the agency that's gonna be investing those assets. And they're gonna allocate the SVF plan assets amongst the different investment categories that you're seeing in this colorful box. Something important to note, that although that allocation of investment is gonna remain the same, the specific investments within those categories will change because the State Board of Investment is actively managing that portfolio, right? It's not static. This is just a little information about the annual returns over the last five years that the State Board of Investment has been able to achieve with the SVF plan assets. And you're kind of seeing two different year ends here, one at June 30th and one at December 31st. And this is something to just look back, reference if you want. So here are those costs that we talked about. So Para charges $30 per firefighter per year as our administrative fee. We are planning to adjust that fee effective January 1st, 2024. We're not sure exactly what it will be, it will likely increase.
And that's paid by the city?
So if the city does not owe a required contribution, it's not gonna owe us anything for the year. What we do is we calculate the administrative fee, and then we take it directly from the pension assets in the account. So it doesn't get charged separately. And then the State Board of Investment, again, pretty low investment fees. They charge six cents for every $1,000 invested. So if you have a million dollars invested at the State Board of Investment, they're gonna charge you 60 bucks a year. So the Para Board of Trustees and our executive director, they do all the policymaking, management, and administration for the SVF plan, but they get advice from an SVF plan advisory board, which is made up of the different representatives you're seeing in this table. The advisory board makes legislative suggestions, and we've seen them have a lot of success with the legislative suggestions that they have brought to the table. So this is a way for Para to make sure that we're listening to voices of people who understand what volunteer firefighters want and need. So if you join the SVF plan, the pension assets are protected at both the state and the federal level. So this statutory quote, essentially, it's saying that we can't take the pension assets and use them to do anything else except for pay the pension benefits for your Fire Department. The federal government in the Internal Revenue Code has a similar rule. Essentially, you can't take pension assets and use them for a purpose other than paying the pension for the beneficiaries. We will just run quickly through how to.
Try to sweeten up enrollment with a puppy picture.
It works. It works.
So joining the SVF plan is a joint decision between the relief association and the city. So both need to agree, right? The steps to enroll, step one, so you request a cost analysis from Para. This has already been done, and we'll go through the cost analysis in more detail. Basically, what we're gonna see on that analysis is that we're estimating the annual cost of the Fire Department participating in the plan at different benefit levels. And then we're also gonna be estimating the required contribution that the city would owe under those different benefit levels. But we'll get to all that when we see some numbers later on here. If you choose to enroll in the SVF plan, we need to have resolutions from the city and the relief association no later than November 30th. And then, once we receive those resolutions, the State Board of Investment is gonna reach out to the owner of the pension assets, and they're gonna help get those assets transferred over. If all that happens, then your SVF plan pension account is effective on January 1st. So in Carver's case, if you decide to join this year, your pension account would be effective on January 1st, 2023. You, sorry, if you want to terminate participation in the plan or transfer pension pension coverage to a relief association, you have the option to do so. It's all governed in statute, and the process for doing so is laid out specifically in statute. We have had a couple of Fire Departments who have transitioned from being a volunteer department to a paid full-time department, in which case they do need to transfer out of the plan because it's only for volunteers. I'll just talk quickly about the pension benefits. So our benefit levels run from $500 to $15,000 per year of service credit. They go in increments of $100. The governing bodies, so in this case, the city, they have the authority to set the benefit level. The city can approve an increase to the benefit level once per year. If you approve an increase in a given year, that increase is gonna go into effect the following year on January 1st. There's no waiting period for requesting an analysis to see whether or not increasing the benefit level would be something you could do. So anytime during the year, Fire Chief or the city can reach out to us, and we'll provide a benefit level cost analysis free of charge. And you can see whether increasing the benefit level is something you want to do for that particular year. The vesting schedule, we already went through, so I think we're familiar with that. A firefighter is eligible to collect their pension when they are 50 years old. They've met their vesting requirement for their Fire Department, and they've been separated from service for a minimum of 30 days. This is just a quick benefit calculation example. We have a 50-year-old firefighter with eight years of service. Let's say they have an $800 benefit level. So under their vesting schedule, they're 52% vested. So the pension payout calculation is just eight years multiplied by 800, multiplied by their vesting percentage there, and you can see their payout, relatively simple math.
Is there a cap on the number of years, or is it till then, when you receive your pension? Like if you, because, can you go back a second?
Of course, sorry.
So if you're 50 years old and you start drawing your benefits at 50 years old, do you draw that then for the term of your life, or you draw it for the number of years you were in the Fire Department?
So the SVF plan is a lump sum pension benefit, so it's a one-time payout.
Oh, okay.
As opposed to a monthly annuity.
Okay.
But there is no cap on years of service. So like if someone provided, let's just say, 40 years of service, we would pay them, we would calculate their lump sum payout with 40 years.
With 40 years, okay, all right, thanks.
The SVF plan does offer survivor benefits, and here you're seeing the succession of how those benefits would be paid. So first, it would go to the spouse, if no spouse, minor children. And if neither one or two, then it would go to the firefighter's estate. Supplemental benefits are paid out on top of that lump sum benefit payment. Para will apply for those supplemental benefits and pay them out directly to the firefighters. So the relief association would no longer have to be going through that application process. And you can see the maximum amounts of those supplemental benefits there. Deferred pensions, so Carver does have a number of deferred firefighters. So we'll go through this section, it's relevant to this department. So if a firefighter defers their pension after the department joins the SVF plan, then their pension benefit is gonna be calculated like everyone else. Pension benefit level in effect when they separate from service, multiplied by their years of service, multiplied by that vesting percentage. Something important to note is that no interest is earned on the deferred benefits under the SVF plan. Now, for firefighters who have deferred their pension before the department joins the SVF plan, and Carver has some of those, the relief association rules that were in effect at the time that person deferred, those are gonna be used to calculate their pension benefit. And that way, we kind of avoid surprises, right? Or have anyone go backwards in their pension benefit amount. So that's, that's an important note, right? Those deferred members are gonna get, they're going to get the benefit they expected based on the relief association rules. But we at Para will calculate that and figure out the relief association that would not be responsible for that.
Gemma, can I jump in and just?
Yes, go ahead.
So the reason we have deferred members is some of them got to 20 years until they're 43 years old. And we can't collect till they're 50, so they're deferred out till they're 50 years old. We changed the relief a few years ago, there is no interest earned, even in our relief. We have one individual, I believe, that does, right?
Yes.
Get interest?
I'm not aware of anybody.
Okay, then they're, I think they're all the ones that had that prior to the change are done then. But yeah, that's why someone gets deferred. Or they leave service, like we got some guys that moved and only had six years, so they're deferred. So I don't, I don't even know what the number is, I think 14 maybe?
That sounds about right. And I think there's one deferred member that earns interest, and that person will continue to earn interest, yep. Okay, so some ongoing activities in the SVF plan, just kind of a summary. So Para is gonna be responsible for depositing that fire state aid into the pension account. We're gonna process all those pension applications, pay out the benefits. We'll apply for and pay out the supplemental benefits. And then we're also gonna be providing the city and the Fire Department with annual pension reports. We'll be providing those benefit cost analyses if any requests for those come through. And then we also have SVF plan newsletters and other information that we're gonna be sharing with the city and the department.
So who does all that work now?
I do. It's a nightmare, it literally, it literally takes, I mean, the beginning of the year is tough because the audit takes about five months to do the audit. And I got about, on this year, about 100 hours invested.
That's it?
Plus, I do my real job.
And fight a fire occasionally.
Yeah.
So the Fire Chief is gonna annually certify the service credit that the volunteers earn. Para sends out a form, it's relatively short and simple. We send it out, Fire Chief fills it in, or fills it out and then sends it back. We'll ask that the Fire Chief review the communications and reports that we send out, of course. And then, this seems small, but it's really important to update the contact information for the Fire Chief with Para so that we know how to get in touch with you. So the city, the city's gonna continue to apply every year for fire state aid. They'll also be reviewing the reports and communications that we send out. Again, they have the authority to increase that pension benefit level. So if that's something that you're interested in considering, again, we ask that you request that benefit cost analysis. We'll get it sent out to you. If the city would owe any required contributions, then we would ask that you pay those. We'll issue invoices to the city if that would happen. Typically, what we do is we will issue an invoice no later than August 1st of a given year. And then the city will have about, let's say we issue it on the deadline, August 1st. They'll have 17 months to pay that. So if we issue you an invoice on August 1st, it won't be due until December 31st of the following year, right? So there's a long time to plan for required contributions, if any. And then again, we ask that the governing body update us with correct contact information so that we can, so that we can find you and tell you exciting things about the SVF plan. Okay, so there's a lot of words on this slide, but we'll go through an example that will kind of illustrate what this is talking about. So just wanna talk about required contributions. So they are due from the governing body if the combined fire state aid and an assumed 6% investment earning on the pension assets do not cover the annual cost of participating. So instead of reading the rest of this slide, I'm just gonna move to the next one. We'll just go through the math. I think that's a little bit easier. So these are not your numbers, these are just to illustrate an example. So let's say your cost of participating for the year was $50,500. Your pension assets are $500,000. We have an assumed 6% return on your pension assets, and that assumption is set in statute. So that's not gonna change unless the statute changes. So the pension assets, 6% on those is $30,000. Let's say you get $20,000 in fire state aid. So the required contribution is the cost minus the assumed return minus the fire state aid. So in this make-believe scenario, you have a $500 required contribution. Now, when you look at the cost analysis that we prepared, there's a lot of numbers in between there, which is why we just kind of went through this example to just boil things down a little bit more. Any questions on this before I move on?
I have a question on the fire state aid. So, I noticed in some of the other slides in here that it lessens, it seems to be lessening. So, is that with population, or did I read that wrong? Oh, so I didn't read it wrong. Okay, then that's good.
Great. So, we talked about the cost analysis. This table looks a little bit different than the cost analysis printout, just because, trying to summarize a little bit here. This is, these are Carver's real numbers from the cost analysis. And you can see that under the benefit level scenarios that we ran, we do end up having a required contribution at the four thousand dollar benefit level. But again, recall that you can come in at a benefit level and you can change it every year, right? So, if you don't hit the four thousand dollar mark this year, it can be something to work up towards, right? Do we want to walk through this? Do we want to pause for questions?
Gemma, our state aid for this year was fifty-one, so, I mean, it's already, you know, these are estimated numbers. We've already covered the four ninety-five for the first year.
Yes.
And then so.
That's right, that's right, yes.
When you said the six percent return by statute, so that is a guaranteed six percent by statute every year, or how?
So, the actual return on the pension assets will likely differ from six percent, right? It will either be higher or lower. But when we calculate required contributions for the city, we're going to assume that six percent rate of return. So, the six percent is a long-term rate of return assumption. So, even though in the short term, you know, the actual rate of return is going to fluctuate, instead of using that wildly fluctuating short-term rate of return, we're going to use the long-term assumption.
Okay, and you feel confident with the six? Has that been something that's been used for quite a while, or does that number change?
Well, I don't know if I feel confident about it. So, it's set in statute. Actuaries who understand actuarial science much better than I do participate in that legislation. And also, the State Board of Investment is kind of a key player in coming up with that number and understanding why it is what it is. I will say that the SVF plan six percent assumption is less than the rate of return assumption for the other public pension plans in Minnesota. So, I think the other ones are seven and a half percent assumed return. So, this is actually a little bit more conservative.
Okay, okay.
I, because I, I had to study this first. Or, right now, if we, kind of, these terrible, we have this big drop. Our analysis requires, in the way that we're managed, to like recover that and plan for it. When I heard Gemma's presentation, the state kind of plans for those fluctuations, so that's why they have the six percent. So, it's not necessarily a reflection of what's happening today. Because of kind of the overall size, they're able to look at this big swath and say, okay, over time, it's going to be six percent every year. So, in a way, it alleviates the city or takes us away from having to kind of respond to market fluctuations on an annual basis because they're looking at that six percent. So, it's a benefit to, I would argue, it's a benefit to the city to have that in place.
Right.
Is that fair to say?
And if something, like, if, if it's determined that, okay, the market is in no way going to, you know, in the long term, return a six percent, return six percent on assets, then we would expect the legislature to take action on that and change the statute so that it reflects a more appropriate long-term rate of return.
No, that's, that answers my question, because when I just see that number is here, we know what's happening right now, but knowing it's looked at as a long term. And I just, when it was coming with the statute, I needed to understand a little bit more, so this all helped, so thank you.
I mean, it just smoothes out the, it makes the cost from the city into the fund much more predictable, right? If it's always going to be six percent, we know our, you know, costs may go up because we may have more people to be covered, but we'll also probably have more state aid. So, our population will be growing, that amount, that five hundred, four ninety-five, or whatever it is we decide to go with, will be predictable. And so that the city doesn't have to figure out how to budget for, oh my God, we got to cover for some market change that we had nothing to do with, right? It just helps us with budgeting perspective.
And if you calculated contributions based on actual short-term rate of return, it would be very wild from year to year. And that wouldn't be very reflective of what we need to do with a long-term account, like a pension account. So, it makes sense to have, an assumption, is six percent exactly correct? I can't say for sure. But it is in statute, so that's what we're working with today. So, I don't know if we, do we want to just go line by line?
Maybe before, if it's okay, Gemma.
Yes.
If we could pause on kind of like getting into the numbers and just with Callie and Brian here, just get a, an overview from your conversations or listening session with relief and just perspectives in your, each of your roles so that the council can kind of hear the fire department and relief side of this issue.
So, over the last couple of years, we've had, we've been with Ameriprise, I was referring by my group, who recently changed to a new company manager. And when that change happened, we had some issues on their end. It made it very difficult for us. In fact, the relief was almost fine over the deal because they made some illegal moves with the special fund. So, we were going to change either way. And, you know, because Para is so new and there was some, I guess, constraints on the policy or on the plan when it first came out, such as five-year-olds, how you got into it. All that went away in the last twelve, fifteen months, right, last year?
This past year, past session.
So, it made it much more appealing to us to go to Para. And, you know, the chief came to me and said, look into this, do some research. So, I dug into it deep earlier this year and shared in IC book. And I was really impressed by what they had to offer. When we had our listening session last month at the meeting, I was very surprised how the majority, if not all, the relief members of the fire department was on board with this. We had some questions, you know, the, because people had heard about this. We have guys that are over twenty years, are considering retiring, and they're like, wait a second, I can't touch my money for five years. And I'm like, that's done. So, some of those, everybody was worried about, were ironed out. And I think we have the most important ever to move forward with this. And, you know, Brent's helped a lot and had some good suggestions discussing it over the last month as well.
I have gotten zero negative comments about this. Everyone's worried, thinks it's a no-brainer that we should move this direction. From a fireside, I see the benefit as, nobody on the fire board are like investment people, right? Well, maybe Luke, because he throws up that one term, you know, but.
I wouldn't even go there, he's like, he sells insurance, but you're just.
He knows a term. If I could think of it, I'd throw it out right now.
Yeah, there it is. You remember it too.
But all seriousness aside, this would really allow them to focus on like firefighting activities and take away that whole, you know, meeting, the open meeting laws and some of those things that the relief currently has to manage by that, you know, would be nice to get rid of, so.
Thank you for explaining kind of why we haven't considered this before, because that was kind of my other question. I didn't realize a lot of the legislation had changed or the policies around this plan. Because when I looked at this, I'm like, this is just like what we have, right? I mean, so very similar from when you're eligible and the vesting period is. And I was like, okay, why haven't we done this before?
So, before, if you went into Para, you can, you know, no one could test their money for five years. Also, they were stuck at five years of whatever initial vesting or payout was, right, to the benefit. So, if we took increases after we joined, someone that had fifteen years, they waited that five years, it's going to make money, that same person that came up, and they still have to wait five years. So, it's, I mean, and there's other little tweaks that have been nice, but yeah.
So, some of these other cities, Victoria, Mayor New Jim Rea, and Conia. I know we have, this firefighter too is coming here from Victoria. So, they were part of this plan. Have you talked to the other communities in Carver County about?
Yes, we, I've contacted five different departments, Watertown, Victoria, I didn't bring my list with, but they're all very supportive of it.
Okay, so they're satisfied with what's happening?
And then also, can you tell them if they go from one, say we get a Victoria firefighter to, you want to go over that with them?
Sure, so the benefits in the SVF plan are portable. So, if you're a firefighter and you go from one SVF plan participating department to another, you take your years of service with you. And then, when your pension benefit is ultimately calculated, we're counting your years of service cumulatively. So, more benefit, right?
And if we have firefighters, and I'm going to use one that we do have, Tim Walsh is an example. If he would have switched and we would have been on that, it would have been a smooth transition and this is just sort of going. And it makes us look more appealing as a city for someone to move here that's on the fire department. We can sell that to other departments, hey, you know, so.
So, look at this, and on the PowerPoint too, there was only one con that was listed. So, I just want to know if you've heard any cons, just so that we get the well-rounded view. Have you heard any cons, were there any cons that you guys can see going into this that might be something that needs to be managed, or might be a little bit of a?
So, with the couple, we, we, a couple of departments, I had a really intensive conversation with them. Knows some of the legis, legislation had changed, so that was their cons. And, I mean, some have only been in for like three years, and they're like, what? Like, yeah, I said, this is, I started reading the legislation and the laws about it. I'm like, you know, July, I believe, is July last year's when it all changed. And I was like, they're like, cool. And some of the other things, some of the, you know, they could get a raise each year, ask for a raise, or the fire chief could go to that, they're just kind of like, we turned it over, it's been great because we don't have work to do. You took away the ten thousand dollars a year you spend for the audit and the fees that come with it. I mean, it just, you're kind of sit back and let them do the work. And you guys watch it as a city, you're more involved on your guys' side as well.
So, for the, the fire relief then, will that disband, or will you keep it as your fundraising?
No, we have, we'll keep it for fundraising because we do do retirement parties. And, you know, after twenty years, we do like buy the guys, after do a plaque for them and a banquet every other year. Since we dropped down from multiple fundraisers to one, we don't, we only can really afford to do a banquet every other year because we're still going to have some costs with insurances, or smoke eater newspaper that we buy for the guys, which is just the statewide, tells the stories of statewide fires that have gone on, give us some background. Yeah, so we'll have some bills left that will fund with the general account, but the special funds will all be on, turned over to them.
Any other questions?
I do have some question, a question on, and you've answered what the required contributions are that we get an invoice. So, for like the example that you gave, are there other scenarios or things that the city might get an invoice for? Or like, I was going to ask what's, you know, who decides if it's a required or voluntary contribution? But it looks like there's really only one required contribution.
Right, so, we will invoice you if there's a required contribution, and that's the only invoice you'd receive from us. The voluntary contribution is just that sometimes cities have some extra in their budget, and they're like, we want to contribute to our voluntary fire pension plan. And so, they just send us a contribution voluntarily. And then, we put that in their fire department's account. But that's not required, hence voluntary, right? But it, it just depends on the city, if they want and have the capacity to do that.
All right, and then, when it's a joint decision, is there an order that the two different groups need to adopt a resolution?
Nope. So, we'll need to have completed resolutions from, separately from the city and the relief association, but you don't have to do them at the same time. We do ask that they be sent to us by November thirtieth this year. We have sample or model resolutions that we can share with you if you choose to move forward. So, that's an easy way to kind of just, basically just fill it out. But, that answers my questions.
So, this is going to free up your time, Brian.
Wasn't that part of it, did?
Okay. Lynn, have you been following this as far as, is this going to be a financially good move for the city?
Yeah, I've been involved with the SVF plan at Watertown, and it is very helpful as far as time and the communication and just knowing, kind of, getting the city involved with the fire department. And, you know, a lot of times, you don't have visibility into the retirement stuff. Also, they take care of so much of it that when somebody does apply to retire or something, that, I mean, they even take care of that, the applications and everything. As far as financially, I mean, the numbers speak for itself. They do all of the calculating of that and everything. So, yes, I think it would be a fantastic move.
Thank you.
I have one more, just, so for the remaining fire relief then, if you're a fundraising county, Lynn made this question for you. But what is their designation? Like, they're not a 501(c)(3) or they are a 501(c)(3), do they have any designations? Like, you're, you're smelling Brian, maybe Brian then has the answer.
We are currently not a 501(c)(3) of any type. So, we are not a nonprofit organization currently. We could apply for it, there's been discussion of that. For what we do, we don't see the benefit. We're a 501(c)(4) actually right now. Because we just don't raise that kind of money. We did have some questions this year in the golf tournament, it was corrected. So, we're going to reevaluate that early of 2023 to see if we want to go through the application process. But currently, I don't see us.
Will that make it easier then? I mean, will you, do you think if you were a 501(c)(3), you'd be getting some donations that you couldn't have gotten because you're a four and it's not? And you, if you don't have the answers to that, that's.
I really don't have the answer. I don't think we would get any more donations, it's just some people thought we were, even with the smaller donations. So, we have to be very clear with people.
By tax deductions?
Yes, you know, we're not going to send you that tax deductible form.
I also think, this is me speaking out loud, that we want to be careful and just make sure that we look into that. If you're going to still carry a checking account and do all of those things, even with the banquet and everything, that you don't need to still file an audit or anything.
We do.
Okay.
So, I've already spoke with Abdo, it's obviously a lot less cost. Kimberly said between fifteen hundred and two thousand dollars a year we'd have to spend for our audit to make sure that we're still doing everything right. Because obviously, we're still making money. So, we, we would do that, I think, like, easier.
Anything else?
Nope, nothing.
You said that the vast majority of firefighters are in favor of this. Is there going to be any kind of formal vote, or do you guys ready to proceed?
We, we would need to call a special meeting. So, you and Brent would need to come to that. And, yeah, we would have, the board would have a vote on it.
But it's not a, it's not a general membership.
It's a, it's a board.
Board. I, sorry. Just wanted to make one clarification piece that looks like my last slide where I started talking about funding ratios, and you can see in Gemma's slide here. Initially, I had thought that we needed to be funded at a hundred and twenty-five percent. And so, like, if this was on a different presentation, I had thought we needed to be funded at a hundred and twenty-five percent. This shows a hundred and one percent, which still means, there's not a formal requirement. So, there's a little note in that one of my slides that recommends a hundred and twenty-five percent at the four thousand dollar level. So, it is, the one twenty-five percent isn't necessarily, you can choose to do that, then it'd just be that your state aid, or excuse me, your contribution from the city would go up to get that funding at that level.
Did you do that number? Do we have that number?
Do we have that number? We did a hundred and twenty-five percent.
So, we wouldn't invoice you to, like, get you at a hundred and twenty-five percent at the four thousand dollar level. So, essentially, what, in order to run that scenario, we'd have to assume that you'd make a voluntary contribution that would bring the pension assets up to a level that puts you at a assets up to a level that puts you at a hundred and twenty-five percent. But I think something that's important to keep in mind is that ratio, like, it's an important measure, right? It's a measure of the health of the fund, more than a hundred percent means you have more than enough assets to pay your liabilities, but it changes all the time because it's assets over liabilities, so every time those components change a little bit, so too does that ratio.
Right.
So it's good to, it's, it's great to have a target, but just remember that it's a moving, it's a moving target.
Well, yeah, it made sense to me is when I talked to a colleague, it's not like, I was thinking of it as insurance, and like, you're not gonna have a catastrophic loss, or at least we hope, or not every firefighter's gonna like retire on the same day, you're gonna pay all, all this pension, so I just had to think of it differently. But we could, we could certainly give, give you that calculation and then just have the council consider making a voluntary, but as Gemma said, the number would fluctuate over time.
Is there a requirement that the state requires or parent requires?
No.
Not at this point. Something else to just think about, it's great to do comparisons between cities, but something to keep in mind is that one benefit level for one fire department, even if you have a similar sized population, might not necessarily be like an apples-to-apples comparison, so I wouldn't necessarily look at Carver as like falling behind if you don't get to the four thousand dollar benefit level right away, because like the specific mix of what's happening in the department as far as the age of their firefighters, the number of firefighters that they have, how many years of service each one has, that's all impacting those liabilities, so I guess, again, I'll just say that I wouldn't view it necessarily as Carver falling behind other cities, it's, it might just be that you have a different mix of firefighters than a nearby city with a similar population.
Thank you. My only other question is, can we make this happen by November thirtieth?
Yes, the council supports it, I mean, my understanding is, is Brian's working on a special meeting based on council feedback, I mean, the council said we're not interested, then that would, but if the council supports it, then we would bring it to your second meeting in November with a resolution for adoption.
Great. I'm supportive of this. At the meeting that we had earlier this summer, you went through all the reasons why, and we had a really great meeting, and I still think that this is a no-brainer, I feel like we should do this as soon as we can.
And what benefit level are you thinking based on what we're seeing here?
I'm fine with doing the four thousand level, and would advocate for that.
Agreed.
Agreed, yeah.
Did you guys wanna do three thousand?
Lynn didn't say anything.
We're not saying anything.
I'm just gonna make the comment, at thirty-five hundred, we don't have any skin in the game, at four grand, we're paying the extra five hundred, but I'm fine with it, fine with it, guys.
Can I ask, I'll follow, so we were, we're getting fifty-one thousand for, in 2022, so...
We already deposited.
Yeah.
So we actually won't owe...
Right.
For 2023.
I deposited it last week.
It's five hundred dollars. It doesn't matter.
Anyway.
But I'm, for the four thousand dollar mark, disappointed, guys.
So yeah, I mean, we just have to give notice of, at least three, we have more than sixty days for a special meeting to the entire group, and obviously I'll have to make sure, because Luke and I have been traveling a lot for work, but we can make it happen in the next probably ten days, have a special meeting, so you guys can have your, our resolution.
Can you zoom in if you need to?
Huh?
Can you just use Zoom if you need to?
Yeah.
And zoom into the meeting?
Yes.
Might, just based on where this is heading, I might connect you with Dave so he could help the relief with a resolution, just so...
That would be great.
They're symmetrical.
All right, great, everyone.
Thanks, Jeremy.
Thank you.
All right, the next item on the agenda is the 2023 B schedule draft.
All right. Look at ease for this year.
So I think in the packet, I talked about just the few that we have some proposed changes for, and I think maybe if we wanna just, by section, I think that might be the easiest. The proposed fees, mostly the sections that are changing are utility connections, rental fees, and then there is a liquor license change, so I think if we could just start with the rental fees, if that works for everybody, I have provided a hard copy underneath your, it's just a little easier to look at, so you can get a full screenshot of it, would you like a copy? I know you like paper.
So, all right, so questions about rental fees?
I think we've discussed this.
Yeah.
Yeah, I feel like...
Perfect.
Let's move on.
Right along. Yeah, I'm good with what we're seeing here, so.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
Utility connection charges.
Yeah.
I'd like to talk about these. Yeah, I would just point out that, sorry, did I skip ahead? Do you wanna say? No, just one thing on the utility, we did break out the replacement water meter parts, and it's just because we've had some lot of people losing metered parts, and we just wanna make sure that those are all per piece, so, so that we can bill them, as well as, if you look on the second page of the utility rates, the water testing fee has traditionally been charged here in the city of Carver annually at nine dollars and seventy-two cents, like in July, and I'm proposing to charge that out monthly, at eighty-one cents a month.
Wait, where are we, I'm...
The second page of utility connection charges.
This, this is a great idea that Lynn had, so what happens is...
There's this weird random, one time a year charge at your bill, and you're like, whoa, in July, when your water bill's the highest.
And dozen, dozen, dozen people will call in and ask about it, and so Lynn had the idea, well, we just charge them...
Monthly fee.
We all love that.
Yep. Totally fine.
And what does that mean? That's the normal testing that we're doing, water?
We have to pay this to the state, so it, we have to pay it to the state, so we're just, we're a pass-through entity.
Okay.
So, but yeah.
Monthly sounds better, yeah.
Just to sneak in here, just to throw a real teaser here, but Lynn, Brenda Efta and I have been working on reformatting our utility bill to try to make it...
Like my suggestion?
Yep, and Joy had a suggestion, we needed to usage and kinda breaking that down, and that started kind of a brainstorming session between the three of us, and so some of it in the end might involve some ordinance tweaks that we're gonna bring Dave Anderson in on, but excited about maybe a more user-friendly utility bill.
Excellent, it's exciting.
Yeah, it is exciting, isn't it?
Speaking of excitement, I have a question about bulk water.
Yes, okay. What is it, what does that mean?
What is what?
And it looks like bulk water, so the water use.
So bulk water is if a contractor will come in and wanna fill up their water truck, you know, for water landscaping, et cetera, so there's a, actually what it most to be a lending machine on the side of the public services building on the north side, and put coins in.
Oh, that's not a residential charge, it's a contractor, whatever, charge.
So...
A vending machine, or...
It's called a water boy, I think.
Okay.
So it looks like it's gotten cheaper to lend water.
Yes, because, yes, we were, I don't, we were way off, and Chad brought that up to me, and I noticed it too, I was like, I spend a gallon, so it'd be a hundred dollars for two thousand gallons, and I mean, people, these contractors are using a lot of water, and so we sent them a bill, I guess, one time, and they're like, what the heck is this? You know, for, your, your water's expensive, and they're way off from other cities, and I think it, it was either a typo error, or, I, I'm not sure what happened there.
Zero in the wrong place?
Yes, yeah, so I think it should've been five dollars, or I, I don't know what happened, but...
I think it was based on some past leadership in the former Public Utilities Department, and it really never got changed. I think at one point, it was considered a hassle, and so the price reflected in a hassle factor.
The hassle factor? Yeah, I don't think it's as much of a hassle, and the six dollars is much more in line with our, yeah, or it should be, so.
Okay, all right.
Good question.
Yes, and then, let's see, sorry, another question, I noticed that there are late fees for water, sanitary sewer.
Go. So I was going to propose a ten percent late fee on all water bills, I didn't know how you guys, what, what are your thoughts on late fees? Cause yeah, there's a late fee on water, there's a late fee on sewer, and then there's a late fee on sand.
Isn't that, what is it, it's a flat rate right now, right? If you miss your...
Yeah.
Water bill?
Yeah, but that's what, it's ten dollars if you're late.
Yeah.
But that's what these fees equal, it's four dollars for water, four dollars for sanitary sewer, and two dollars for stormwater.
Yeah.
Is that divided out because some people still only get just a stormwater?
No, it's cause the, the bill is for all three, so if you don't pay it, you're really not paying all three of those portions.
And that's where we get the ten?
So why are we breaking it out?
I think it just makes it easier to...
Because you're, you're, cause it's broken out as a revenue stream, because it pays for storm.
Okay, okay, I see, okay, okay. But, sorry, you were gonna propose a percentage instead of a flat fee?
I was, but, I mean, cause if you think ten dollars on a forty dollar bill, kinda high, I mean, ten percent on a forty dollar bill, four dollars? I, I don't know, I don't know how that ever came about, but I, that was just my thought.
You know, and I've heard, I have heard this, obviously, about the late fees, if you, you know, miss a month, which people do, you know, happens, but yeah, you're right, I mean, if you have a forty-five dollar water bill...
But we also have six hundred dollar water bills, and ten percent on that.
Yeah, so, let me finish, so if we have, you know, ten percent, or ten dollars for a forty dollar bill, yes, seems very high.
Yeah.
But then, as we were just alluding to, that if you have a, you know, five hundred dollar...
What's ten bucks?
Yeah.
Against that.
I don't have an issue with a ten dollar one. I hardly want to build this summer.
No, I have one too.
I've never paid it, nor beyond my kitchen counter, but I think we have a really great policy, unwritten or otherwise, of your first one is redeemed pretty easily if you call in to talk about, to talk to Brenda about it, so, and I have heard of a resident who was out of town and had a medical emergency, and same, they experienced the same thing, so I think, sure, is ten dollars on a forty dollar or even a sixty dollar water bill significant?
Yeah.
But if you don't make it a habit, and if it's a one-time, mistaken, then like, I still, one of ours was, you know?
It's a six months month, then vacation month, and you get back and went, oh, whoopsie.
I'm gonna three hundred dollars.
So yeah, I'm okay with keeping it. Cool. Anybody feel differently?
I don't have strong feelings, but I'll keep it. I have a strong feeling, it's more the administrative part, it's, yeah, that's kinda easier.
Eh, we'll keep it.
Okay.
All right, then that brings us to business permits and service charges.
I'm gonna just point out that there doesn't appear to be any license for any THC or cannabinoid business, and that seems like money that we're missing out on, but I've been in that room before.
So I wanna, I have a question for you then on that. So we don't, I mean, for, let's say, the bars, so they have liquid license things, but we don't charge them a business fee, we'll call it a business fee, so then like the Carver General or anything like that, we don't charge them a business fee to have a business here in Carver, so I think if we were to call out a THC business, I don't know that for myself I can, could justify charging them a fee, but we don't charge a, like, a business fee for any other business in town.
But we charge the bars for liquid licenses.
Well, isn't that, but there's a state one that they have to do, and what do we charge them, just the citywide? So what's the city one? What does that incur for us? Is that the time it takes us to get together the state stuff, or do we just charge that? That's all in here.
Twenty-five hundred bucks is about the, twenty-six, so like your license?
We have the license, okay, so then, and then they pay their state one on top of that?
They're, they don't owe anything to the state.
They don't, okay. They just get approved at the state?
They get a twenty-five dollar retailer card, and then they get approved at the state.
Yeah, and one thing too, I like to always point out with liquor license fees, part of the cost, I mean, at first people think, you know, wow, almost three thousand dollars a year just to have a business, but I think the intent behind it from a statute standpoint, and then what the ordinances do, is that liquor licenses are sort of a natural suck on law enforcement resources because of the fact that, you know, people are consuming alcohol and doing things they're not supposed to do, and that over time can, can be a drain on public resources, and so that's, I think, the, the point there of how high that is. Other business licensing fees, the programs are really meant to just pay for administration, so for example, with the THC example, the city chose to regulate that business, you know, the point would be for public safety reasons, you don't want people selling THC if you don't do background checks or whatever, because there are rules they have to follow, and you wanna make sure they're rule-following people, but the fee that they would pay would really just be commensurate with whatever it costs the city to maintain that program and to run background checks and, and that kind of a thing, so...
You don't think there's gonna be any other drain on city resources or law enforcement resources through that type of business?
That's not the point I'm making, no, the, the point is, is you, there, there's kind of an established liquor license fee that's been, been developed over years, many, many, many years.
Right.
This, the THC thing is brand new.
Right.
And I don't know what cities that are licensing THC businesses are charging for a fee, but it's nowhere near what they're charging for liquor, it's in the low hundreds, just to make sure you can pay for background checks.
And just to piggyback on Dave's comments, the city would need an ordinance that created a permitting program, and so we can't, at this point, we can't create a fee because we don't have an ordinance, but if you, I mean, if you adopt an ordinance, you can assign a fee, but it can't be in reverse.
Okay.
I have a, I need to show a question, and so just above the liquor license ones, we've got the sexually oriented business licenses, so I thought in our ordinances we had, there was no strip joints, that kind of stuff was in ordinance, am I wrong?
Yeah, you can't, you can't restrict it, they have to be able to be given a spot, so...
So it's, it's, there's a location ordinance, right? It can't be, that's the word I'm looking for.
It can be in certain zones, from what I understand.
I haven't looked at yours in particular, but most of the time, yeah, it's, it's a First Amendment issue, which is a great lead-in to my next, I don't know, but generally you can't just say you can't have them in the city, you have to, you have to have a mechanism for...
I'm pretty sure our ordinance is a zoning ordinance, like you could only have it in these zones in the city.
Yeah, I just, I can't remember, cause I would say if, if it was something that was in there, we'd need that, but obviously we do, cause we, I haven't looked at it in a long time, so. Then my other one is the outdoor sidewalk cafe, what is this about? What is this for?
I think it's from a few years ago.
Yeah, so that's for like, if you want to, like, the only people that we've issued one to is Harvey, so to put tables and chairs and create a kind of cafe space, so they fill out an application, we make sure that the site, you can still pass on the sidewalk, they give us a plan, et cetera.
So this is technically then an administrative fee for that, because to me, it seems kind of like a silly arbitrary fee to charge them just to have outside, cause what's it paying for?
There's probably, I could be wrong about this, but there's probably like a requirement that they sign, even like a indemnification agreement, there's some paperwork that goes into it, because you wanna make sure if they're serving things on your sidewalk or doing things on your sidewalk, that they're not harming the public, and if they do, that the city would be protected, so that's my guess, but you may...
So we have outdoor sidewalk cafe ordinance, and it sets up the rules, and so as a part of those rules, there's a permit requirement that we can verify, and where you have location for the statime pay, or the permit cost pays for your statime to process the permit and go out and measure, et cetera.
Okay, cause if there wasn't anything needed, great that we have the ordinance, but if we're charging a fee for no reason, that's administrative, that's fine.
All right, moving on. We're good on liquid licenses?
Yep.
Okay, and we got a building contract, looks like there's no...
There are no changes, the only other change was we added eight and a half by fourteen copies.
I saw that.
So, because...
Very controversial.
Because, cause they've been reclassed.
I see, okay. All right. All right, so I got the other comments, questions, thoughts, concerns?
No.
Great, here we come on, let's move on to Panhandle. This was something that I asked with the council's backing, we decided to look into it, I think we have all been out and about in our neighboring communities and have seen Panhandlers out and about, so I thought we'd see what if any... So I thought we'd see what, if anything, we can do. Mr. Anderson?
Yes, thank you, Council. So, you know, my goal with the memo is to try to be as concise as possible and just kind of lay out some of the introductory constitutional law stuff that comes along with panhandling regulations. And overall, cities have very little discretion to do any regulating of just panhandling alone. That's protected under the First Amendment. There's numerous ordinances around the country that, you know, over the course of the last dozens of years have been thrown out, and you can't do it because all somebody's doing is, you know, asking a stranger for money. And how can you tell them they can't do that? But they can, example, I use my memo as you can't ask somebody what time it is, which you, or you can't ask somebody what time it is, but you can't walk up and ask them for money. So based on that fact, that regulating panhandling by itself is considered a content-based regulation, it's protected by the First Amendment, and it's subject to a really, really high level of scrutiny by courts. And they almost always fail, or they do always fail, that level of scrutiny, so that's why they're tossed. So what some cities in Minnesota, and it's typically the bigger cities that have a more, I think, significant panhandling issue, Minneapolis-St. Paul, Anoka, I was surprised, has one, and Rochester. What they've done is they've adopted ordinances that are really meant to go after people that are doing what's known as aggressive soliciting or aggressive panhandling. And the intent there is if you're doing that activity coupled with something, you know, else, like maybe an aggressive tactic or blocking somebody from walking by you, or threatening them, or you're very close to an ATM machine, you know, we can regulate it, and we can probably support that. Or there's a lot, much stronger argument that the city can support and would be able to defend that kind of regulation. The problem, not problem, I mean, the issue most cities face when that's presented to them is, well, that's really what we're worried about. We haven't ever had complaints about people being aggressively pursued for money. It's more, you know, we're wondering if we can, you know, curtail just the folks that are kind of standing out in the community, whether it's in the street or in the median, asking for money. Because, for whatever reason, some folks just don't want those people in their community doing that. And so, you know, I did point out at the end of the memo, there are some regulations, like obstructing traffic. There are things that are already addressed in state statute that I think do get to the root of, you know, some of those, some of those issues. There's, of course, the assault statute. You can't walk up and threaten somebody, or you can't harm somebody. And those kind of take those things into, into account as well. But when it comes to panhandling, you're pretty limited as a city in what you can, what you can do if you don't want to get sued or challenged on it. So I'm happy to answer questions. If the city's interested in exploring something like the cities that I mentioned have adopted with aggressive panhandling, I'm happy to provide an example to the council or prepare a, you know, draft, and then you can talk about it. Again, the fate of those ordinances hasn't really been decided yet because they haven't been challenged. And maybe that's a good sign. Maybe they would have been challenged had there been a reason to challenge them, or an attorney out there who thinks that they're illegal. But that's not bulletproof either. It could be, you know, it could be challenged if you adopted that kind of thing, which any ordinance you adopt could be challenged. So that's just an introduction. Hopefully, the memo provided a little background, and if you have questions or if you want to talk through this further on here.
Courtney, you asked for this to come forward. Do you want to talk about?
Why?
Yeah, the way I kind of teed it up, I saw in the neighboring communities. Um, I, you know, thank you for doing this. I think that this is helpful. I think we're in a situation like the sex offender ordinance, where, that we talked about a year or two ago, where there isn't much that we can do legally, and there isn't much that I'm comfortable with doing legally. So I did reach out yesterday to the mayors of a couple of our neighboring communities, where I've seen panhandlers, and they said exactly what you said. There's nothing really that they can do. You know, it's easier to go after folks for glittering than it is panhandling, which often, they said, go hand in hand. So, was one of those mayors Chaska, by the way? Okay. Yep. And so, yeah, and I'm sure we're thinking about the same area. I think it's only a matter of time before folks head this way. I've been shocked at places in Carver County that I've seen them over the summer, so.
So can I, oh, I'm sorry. I have a question for you.
Yeah, no, go ahead.
So just from real world, world experience, so I, Chaska Kung Foods, and if it's the bank that's on that side or whatever, there was a family that was there for an extended period of time. And there were some pictures on social media of like, the glittering mess that they left behind. Do you know from the mayor, had, did they, did anybody get cited? Have any of their panhandlers been cited for glittering, or you didn't?
I didn't have that. He, he used the glittering example more of his experience in, I think, St. Louis Park.
Okay.
And having there, he said that they did go after folks for glittering.
Okay.
But I don't think he said it specifically to Chaska.
Okay.
So, yeah, it's something that's tough to deal with. Another mayor reached out and said that it's hard to enforce the ordinances that are there of you can, you know, you can stand on the sidewalk like any of us can, but you can't stand in the median or whatever the rules are, so.
So really, they are on the side, I mean, because if they come onto private property, you can call, they can be called to kicked off that, right? I mean, so I would assume, I mean, if you're.
It's a fine.
Come stand by yard, I can probably say that you're trespassing, right?
It's a fine line, and I think that the folks who might be doing this know enough to toe the line just to get to that threshold, but not to cross it, do you know what I mean? So I, aggressive panhandling, panhandling is not a concern of mine at this point. I was just wondering if there was anything that we could do proactively to put in place so that if and when we could say, nope. But fortunately, it sounds like there isn't.
I mean, is there something we could put? I mean, I've listened to everything about why we can't. Is there a way that we can?
So the, the only very creative solution that one of my colleagues, who's a city attorney for Brooklyn Center, they did a couple of years back, and, you know, I don't, I'm not, this is not an apples to apples comparison with Carver and Brooklyn Center, of course. There, there are a few very, very busy, major intersections in Brooklyn Center, and they did not want people panhandling at those intersections. So they adopted what was called a median safety ordinance, and it prevented people from being stationary in those medians. In those particular intersections, it was like four, five, or six really, really busy, commonly traveled intersections with multiple lanes in both directions. And, you know, they supported the, the ordinance with all these findings about traffic counts and how many.
Safety.
Yeah, how fast those cars are going. And, and so it really was not a panhandling ordinance, but it was meant to address panhandling. And to date, they have not been challenged on it, and I think it's been pretty effective. That said, you know, I think that Brooklyn Center with those, those intersections is sort of an outlier just because they're very, very, I, I have to pull the ordinance up to look at which intersections they were, but you'll, you don't have any intersection in Carver that are in your near.
Anyone near that?
That busy.
We're getting close with the 212.
We're getting.
To answer your question, I mean, they were looking for every opportunity, and that's really the only thing that I think was feasible.
Okay.
Has worked, but beyond that, you know, I feel like there would be a, not necessarily a challenge. If you tried to, if any city tried to adopt just a strict prohibition on panhandling, there would be a First Amendment group, so that would jump on it in two seconds and, and with the issue. It's not, you don't even have to wait till you cite somebody for it, you know.
That's the last thing I wanted, for this to become a money-making opportunity.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, many people don't correspond on its face, panhandling with First Amendment. You know, you kind of have to think, I guess that makes sense, right? It's free speech and all that, but it's not a jump. I, you know, many cities ask this question, and I think it's a good one. But fortunately, you're pretty limited in what you can do just with panhandling, so.
Cite them for the littering and call it a day?
Or obstructing traffic, you know, if they're, if they're out in the street and doing things that are in violation of the right of way or statutes, you can get there. But making threats, you can charge them with assault and that kind of thing.
That's usually not the problem. The problem is camped out for weeks of time.
All right, any other questions?
No.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, city managers' report.
Yep. Uh, just reminding you, tomorrow's the general election, for those who forgot, Friday. Friday, the city offices are closed in observance of Veterans Day. And just had a quick idea, this afternoon, we're gonna do a kids vote for the governor's race at City Hall tomorrow. So we've got some social media stuff out there, and some, we'll have some Halloween candy that I'm trying to get around.
Nice. Nice.
I know.
I love the angles here, okay?
Do they, do they get the I voted sticker?
Yeah, I think we're gonna try to make arrangements for that.
All right. All right, um, let's see. Any quick council requests or motion for adjournment?
I'm gonna make a motion to adjourn.
Second by council member, okay? Second by council member Sarah.
All those papers.
Post.